...process, letting the process play out. We shouldn't let outside force, discussing lawsuits interfere with the process when there are legitimate ways that we can make a change.
I do think that having more council members may be a way to solve the problem of people feeling less represented. But if we go through with all the schemes that are going to be proposing the ballot, and it doesn't work because people don't come out as votes, then where are we at? We're out of options, we're still left with voter apathy. And that's something that can be encouraged by all community groups, but can say yet well. So I'm taking this day to say thank you very much for protecting the people, property, and the process of Anaheim.
Welcome. My name is Michael Glass and I am the newly appointed president of the Anaheim Arts Council. Thank you, Mr. Tate, councilman, ladies and gentlemen, for giving us space to speak our words. There are some really good voices speaking here tonight, really good public preachers, street preachers. Voices coming from many different quarters. And I come here with a little logo that says "Let the Arts Speak as Well." Somewhere down the line, we don't know how far, things will get better in Anaheim. The process will take a long time, will be many trip-ups and stony pathways along the road, but healing will slowly come, and I hope people will not take their eyes off that goal. How is it possible that the arts could speak into this community? Oddly enough, ladies and gentlemen, the arts have never been silent with issues of public politics and power and social situations. The Chicano art movements of the 1960s spoke powerfully about who we are, where we come from, what our concerns are, and where we want to go. Art has always been a powerful way of expressing the inner emotions and thoughts and feelings and aspirations of people. And we're trying to put together a project here in Anaheim that we take out onto the streets where artists meet with teenagers and adults, not the children, teenagers and adults, to say, "Come and memorialize who you care about in art. Come and put down your fears and concerns in your art. It doesn't matter which side of the conflict you're in, come and share what you feel in your drawings. We will have artists with you, to sit with you, to help you, to put what your drawings say on the paper." We also want to take actors and directors and work with people who feel they have something to say, to put together little stage scenes that could be part of an evening concert where local people sing their lyrics and their poems and their music. We want to take the art back into the parts of the city that often doesn't see art, and we call it "Let the Arts Speak." Now, ladies and gentlemen, you might feel this is a very feeble and pathetic thing to be doing at this time, but the arts have always been powerful, and I believe they can be. And if all those pictures and memories of what we achieve when we do this become scanned, recorded, and become part of the permanent art history of the city of Anaheim, we will have done something whereby people will never forget here in 2012, and it will be there in the art and the emotion of the people of this city. So I'd like to ask for your support as we move ahead with this. I've had many misgivings during the past few days as to whether or not this is a crackpot project. Whether we might try and do something, it all comes to nothing. And there's me standing in a parking lot, waiting for people to come and draw pictures, and nobody comes, and I go home feeling like a complete idiot. So I'm not sure what the outcome should be. I'm looking for support from the community. And one thing I'd like to say as I close, ladies and gentlemen, if you feel this is something worthwhile doing, yet another voice to bring healing and a sense of understanding in our community. When I finish, would you give me a big round of applause?
Mr. Glass, I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
If you think I'm a tough guy, stay quiet.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff, business owners, and residents here and at home. My name is Kerry Condon, I'm a 22-year veteran of the Anaheim Police Department, and here today as the president of the Anaheim Police Association, representing over 600 sworn retired police officers. I'm here to support my officers who were involved in not only the recent police shootings, but all those officers that have been involved with similar dangerous events. And those who did an outstanding job protecting their families and valuable tourism, business assets, and homes will be almost 55% since 2008. With regard to the recent dangerous events, thank goodness our officers are alive and not harmed. You go home and city employees to their families. Every shooting in Anaheim has been investigated by an independent agency, Orange County District Attorney's Office, located in Tony Recapus. To date, there's been no finding of anyone doing by Anaheim Police and the atmosphere of prior support of these police officers and the entire police department, as you and past councils have always given. There are also no reason to think the district attorney has a conflict, don't do anything, or would not do their normal thorough and tough job. But I welcome any professional agency to review these investigations by the district attorney's office. Instead, in our profession, that if one can retire after 30 years without having to fire their weapon, they are truly blessed. There is no other profession besides public safety and the military that has the responsibility of facing the daily threat of being killed or severely injured, and how to engage suspects in these events when we make split-second decisions on using busy force to protect others and ourselves. The recent shootings are tragic, and we wish that no police officer ever has to make these life-changing decisions. But the world is not a safe place for everyone, especially with the release of thousands of felons and tollies to streets of our communities from the state thanks to Sacrament's wisdom and Assembly Bill 109. Anaheim police officers have received death threats from different gangs in the city over the last year and in the years past. These threats are credible and we take them seriously, with only a few months ago that gang members in the Guinealane neighborhood confronted two of our officers and shot at them as they controlled that neighborhood. But the gangs in this city do not go out of neighborhoods, not as long as the men and women who serve and protect our residents and visitors have the same. Even with these threats of death and violence against us, our officers continue to go into the gang and drug-infested neighborhoods and put their lives in danger to root out these domestic terrorists who strike fear in the residents who are afraid to be heard. These cited residents fear the gang members, their friends and family, for acts of retaliation if they do speak against them. I know this because I've worked in our gang and drug-infested neighborhoods as a community policing officer, gang investigator, street narcotics investigator, and homicide detective. I thank the previous and current councils for their support, for I know you all support our police officers, and not the criminals and gang members, who not only victimize those, and our low-income Hispanic neighborhoods, but all those who lived the Anaheim hills to West Anaheim, including those who visit our businesses and make this city great. Our police chief and department are first rate, and we have invested and made the Anaheim Police Department one of the greatest agencies in Orange County. We stand alone and we will not be reactive, relander, or surrender our streets to gang members, cartels, drugs, guns, or criminals who prey on our residents, visitors, and businesses. The men and women of Anaheim Police Department love this city.
Mr. Glass, I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Vern Nelson, Orange Juice Block. It's great to see so many people here today. This is what democracy looks like. The people here are what's called a sleeping giant. Now they're awake, and I hope Anaheim's people never go back to sleep. I hope you're all registered to vote, but voting is never enough. We need to keep organized, we need to keep informed, we need to keep coming back here whenever we have something to say. Anaheim needs real serious investigations into the police shooting, and Anaheim needs justice, and Anaheim needs the Citizens Review Board for the police, like Fullerton is working on. And look how much work it's taken Fullerton to get as far as they've gotten so far.
That's right.
Anaheim needs two good new council members this November, council members that will listen to the people and represent the people, instead of just the big corporations and developers that pay for their campaigns. Just in case some of you don't know, although most of you probably do, today the council is going to vote on two important questions that will give you more of a voice in this city. And three members of the council, the three that are not Mayor Tate or Logal, have been fighting against these measures like their lives depended on it, but we can always hope to change their minds today. The first question is called "District Elections." Right now, as you can see, we have only five council members. Each of them has to run for office throughout this whole huge city, which costs so much money that it can't be done without the help of powerful special interests, developers or unions. And most of these council members end up being from the wealthy hills. With district elections, each section of Anaheim will have their own council member who knows the people and the issues in that area. With six districts, it'll be six times less expensive for a regular person to run without depending on money from developers or unions. And even with no money, you can still knock on all the doors and get to know the people in your district, which you could never do in all of Anaheim. And the three members of the council who are not Mayor Tate or Logal want to spend millions of your taxpayer dollars on expensive attorneys to fight against this reform. Even Disney, who has always told these members what to do, has come out today in favor of district elections. So it'll be real amusing to watch these members suddenly change their tune today, by "Better late than never, we are forgiving people." To speak briefly to some of my scaredy cat white friends who think that district elections will divide Anaheim into a big war of everybody against everybody, I have to remind you that every California city the size of Anaheim or bigger already has district elections. It's not a radical idea.
False.
And I don't see L.A., San Diego, San Jose, San Francisco, Fresno, Sacramento, Long Beach, Oakland, or Vegas Field ripping each other's throats out. The other thing they'll vote on today is about letting the people vote on subsidies to hotels here. That means giving to developers in Disney hundreds of millions of dollars in tax breaks, something that should only happen when the people of Anaheim get something out of it, like a guarantee of local jobs and local investment, the best cure for the gang lifestyle.
Yeah.
I'm running out of time, but I'm sure other people will speak about "Let the People Vote." I hope you'll all stay involved and pay attention to everything that happens here today because it's-
Mr. Nelson, I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
It really affects you all. Steve Zepone!
Thank you. My name is Azucena Malanado, 435 West Center Street, Promenade. I am relatively new to Anaheim. I have been living here for two years, and I am growing to absolutely love my new city. And I apologize to everybody here that it's taken the actions of the last couple of weeks to move me to action to become involved in my own community. So I am grateful to be here, and I commend you for opening up your meaning to our community. I think that it is so evident that you have opened it up to the community that the political process is absolutely important and imperative in order for our wishes or demands or anything that a community wants can really only happen through the political process. So I encourage us to become more involved, to register, to vote, and I am here today to support the change to be voted, to elect our members of council through district. I wasn't involved when they were coming up with the plan of how to do this. I would have said I would love a combination of the two, district and at large. I've seen it work so perfectly in other cities around the country, but that's not on the table. What's on the table is to change to districts, and I wholeheartedly support that as I've seen how it works. And I see that city after city after city throughout the United States is coming along to agree that this is really the way to go in order to have fair representation of anybody who lives within that city. So I'm here to support that, I hope you seriously consider that, and I hope we as residents of Anaheim are here to follow up with that and become involved in the political process and vote. Thank you.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Mayor Tate and council members. My name is Nina Ortiz, and I am a longtime resident of Anaheim. I also work here, along with my sisters, I was raised in Anaheim and went to schools here, and then we went on to higher education to work in social services and education throughout this country. I'd like to bring up a couple of points as to suggestions to unify this community more together. I think the community outreach in specific neighborhoods should be more emphasized. I think we should have like family resource centers in different neighborhoods, specifically in the neighborhoods. I know that we have a lot of Boy and Pa and the Boys and Girls Club, but I think family resource centers specifically like in Anaheim Drive or Pauline Street would really benefit the people there. I think group counseling should be offered to families affected in police officer shootings. I think more training for police officers should be had, and the people, the residents of Anaheim should know what are the protocols and policies that you guys take for, you know, approaching a person that you're stopping on the street, and we should know what that is supposed to look like. We should also start a pop watch here. The city of Berkeley, while sunny, has a really good program where the police are accountable to the residents there, and it's worked out really well for them. I think bringing that to Anaheim would be a really good thing.
Yeah.
And my last point is that each meeting should be translated into Spanish. I think that it's a great idea to bring everybody together and have a big forum, but they should be held at a later time when people like my parents get off of work and are able to come, and they should be translated into Spanish so they're more actively able to participate. As a result of that comment, I would like to translate my points into Spanish. Yo pienso que la comunidad debería tener centros comunitarios en visitados específicos como Anaheim Drive y Pauline Street donde pueden ayudar a toda la familia desde los niños chiquitos hasta los abuelos. Pienso que deberían de tener consejería para ayudar a familias afectadas por la crítica de sus familias cuando fueron matados por la policía. Más entrenamiento para la policía. A la comunidad debería saber de las pólizas de la policía cuando pasan, cuando paran a una persona. Deberíamos de empezar un grupo comunitario como Pop Watch que ayuda a mantener la policía justa y responsable cuando tratan a la gente. Y deberíamos de tener estas puntas más tarde en el díaz y carrocides en español. Gracias. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Carla Castillo. I'm 23 years old, and first of all, I'd like to thank for taking the time out of your days to listen to our community. I just want to tell you that my role is my friend, and it's not about race, and it's not about cops, it's not about gang members, it's about the goodness and evil in somebody's heart, you know? And it's actually saying that through his loss, it brought Anaheim together as a community. I helped out in the Pop Watch for him, and I love how the neighborhood of Anaheim came together to try to support the family, you know? And all I ask is, like, you guys want respect from us, it's like we want respect from you guys too. And it's not just you guys, but the police, you know? And if everybody runs, it's because every time they do come, it's because they beat them down, or they try to charge them for things that they do not, you know, that they didn't do. So all I ask is, you know, and I feel like my policy, as you say, every felon, every criminal, I would like for you to ask for, to guide you, and whoever took the man's life, you know, just to get judgment, to get justice, you know, to get tried, and to get what he deserves, you know? Because I don't want no more or no less, it's just that I'm very nervous, I'm sorry. But yeah, that's all I want, you know? For him to get justice, and for him, whatever it takes, whether it's life or whether he gets out, whatever it is, you know? For him to get justice, you know, because he was a good guy, you know? And for him to get taken, it's like, you said this morning, but I know that has a lot of benefits, you know? And because of one man's judgment, it's like he's gone. So all I ask is to touch your heart, you know, and to guide your city and to guide your community to a better Anaheim. That's all.
Welcome. Thank you. Hello, my name is Ross Lemero. I've been in these parts of the county here 41 years, and I've been a businessman in Anaheim 22-some-odd years. And what I wanted to say was is that we've had a lot of events that have occurred these past few weeks, and you mentioned the investigations, and I wanted to ask, and I wish that what not gets lost amongst all of that, because a lot of times if all these happening things get lost, and what not, the fact get lost amongst all these other events, are the police actions against the neighbors in the Anaheim street community following the shooting incident? And purely going by the videos and the TV depictions, the dog attacking men, women, and children, officers at point-blank range on people with firearms or whatever weaponry they had, you've got to just say to yourself that what occurred was uncultured and perhaps even impotent. And in review, the actions of the officers that day is what precipitated public discontent and probably that eventually led to the righteous situations that ensued in our city. And you know, somebody's got to take responsibility for that.
Yeah.
Who made that work? Who made that call? Who allowed those actions to happen? So I'm here to speak on that one point, because a lot of times things get lost in the midst. And you know, our city is open to the world. We have thousands of tourists that come in here, Disneyland, the stadium, the pond, or whatever. And I have to honestly say, in all fairness, our officers here in Anaheim, they're dealing with that, deal with the highest level of professionalism when they're dealing with that tourist community. We've got to give credit for that. But you know, really, that's all we're asking, is that they feel that they deal with that same high level of professionalism with the residents and the community of Anaheim. That's all we're really asking, that they stick that same high level of professionalism to their people in their city. And you know, we can lay blame here or there, we're all here for the purpose of coming together, but what really, what matters is that these things don't happen again, that a system is set up, we've had the call for the police review board, and that this thing will not occur again in our city. And just real quickly, you have the chance now to make some changes in Anaheim. You have a lot of your agenda today. Please go forward with district elections. Please go forward with reforms regarding the developers' fees. That money could have been used for resources, and please consider the creation of this police review board, Mr. Sepulvedre Garcia, I mentioned earlier.
Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Welcome. Hello, my name is Pastor Phil Aguilar. I represent Set Three Ministries, which is a worldwide ministry. Been on the streets of Anaheim all my life. Born and raised in Anaheim, Anaheim, calling as mom, dad went to Anaheim High School. Been around a long, long time, and my whole job in ministry for the last 36 years has helped the people get out of gangs, off of drugs, and get to know Jesus Christ. Been doing it for a long, long time here, but profiling is something that is, it happens all the time. Like I said, I've been profiled before, and I've had half of the Anaheim Police Department at least, in my home as they raided me in 2008, my home. And from our appearance in some other sources, they heard us, like I came, took 12 of my grandchildren out of the house, daughter-in-law, son-in-law, put out there, my wife in a paddy wagon with handcuffs on her, sitting there, and all of them screaming and yelling, flasching and aiming. I didn't know Anaheim had a tank, but there was a tank in front of my house. They even took a little deaf hamdog, the dog department, whatever you call it, he got bailed out before me, but it had a million-dollar bail. All of those things because they thought something was going on behind my doors. I've talked to the chief staff, and I told them they could knock on my door, I have a cup of coffee, they don't have to come like that anymore to my house. But you know what? I'm not bitter, I'm better. Because now, the things that I've seen, a couple of weeks ago, we're getting ready for church on a Wednesday night right there, two officers rolled up, there was about 10 of us, getting ready to go into church, they pulled over, pulled out a gun, they're getting a little nervous. So my thing is, my take on it is this, I see the police officers in the street, and they're all about the age of my kids. They just need some counseling. And see, I'm not saying they're bad, they just need a little help. And like I heard Sepulvedre earlier, talking about a police review board, I'm just talking about someone maybe, maybe a little anger management counseling, they need to know about our community, they need to know about the neighborhoods. And I'll put them down with the shots, they're scared, they're going to these neighborhoods, they're all scared, they're ready to shoot. I'm just saying we can calm them down. They don't need marijuana, they don't need a car. They need a little counseling, a little help, a little love, and I volunteer to help in any way I can in this beautiful city that I love, Anaheim. God bless you.
Yes. Thank you, Pastor.
Welcome.
That's a hard act to follow. Mayor, council, point officials, a little bit front of me, and behind me. My name's Sandy Ciasnich. I live in Logan, Irvine. I'm what your police chief calls an outside agitator.
Woo!
I'd like to make a short statement from the Green Party of Orange County. The Green Party of Orange County, part of the Green Party of the United States, a recognized national political party, deplores the state of police killings in Anaheim, at least five in 2012 alone. These and subsequent savage actions by Anaheim police against unarmed residents who justifiably demand accountability from their municipal police force are part of a growing pattern of gross civil rights violations which have occurred for years in this city and elsewhere in the nation. Firstly, the Green Party calls to immediately suspend Anaheim Police Chief John Welter pending formal review. Secondly, Green Party calls to establish effective and immediate civilian oversight of Anaheim Police Department. Thirdly, barring that, Green Party calls to disband and disarm Anaheim PD. The current department is a danger to public safety of Anaheim residents and to surrounding Orange County communities. They are an armed force which acts without oversight or accountability to Anaheim's residents who they're pledged to protect and serve.
That's right.
Fourth, we strongly support calls on U.S. Department of Justice to launch a full investigation of Anaheim Police Department for all civil rights violations. The Orange County Green Party urges all Anaheim residents to take a strong interest in their community and work to resolve all differences using grassroots organizing and nonviolence. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Reed, City Council members. My name is Martin Lopez, and I am a Anaheim resident for seven years, but I have actually been working in Anaheim 22 years, so I really do know this city very well. And I'm here tonight to speak on district elections. And while it seems to appear, or appears like you guys are now considering the issue of district elections, like putting this on the agenda, let's not forget, and I want to remind you, that there is a lawsuit pending. So I'm here tonight to urge you to make a few points, and one of my main points is to urge you to settle the lawsuit before you move this item to open on the ballot. Let's not forget that this is a civil rights violation, and this is not a political item. So please, I urge you to settle the lawsuit as soon as possible, actually now. So the other point that I want to make is that the council needs to stop stalling, I mean, this, and bring, stop bringing these alternatives, and let's bring a solution to this issue, and sit down with the community. And I want to ask the city council now, I mean, have you guys actually had any discussions with the plaintiffs at all, the people that filed the lawsuit? I mean, let's not forget, everything that is happening around district elections was brought up by a group of concerned citizens, and have you guys talked to them? I mean, from what I know, you haven't even talked to them, you guys have really decided to put the agenda, but you need to talk to them. This item, this issue needs to be settled in the courthouse, not in the polls. Number three, Anaheim needs at least eight council districts. I mean, Anaheim is a huge city, 350, oh, close to 350,000 residents. Six district councils will not be, is not enough. It will be too many residents for council members. You need to make districts that are reasonable and viable for residents to be able to talk to, to be able to reach to the city council members, to be able to have, be in council communication with them. We want the choice, and this is not about race or a specific race, but this is we, as a Latino community, we want to be able to choose a candidate of our options. And lastly, we, I mean, given that the current city council has not addressed this issue before, and now that our lawsuit is pending and is being filed now, so we don't trust that you guys will make the best decision for this, for redistricting or establishing this, so we need, you guys need to sit down and negotiate, and with plaintiffs, and with the community, and let us all draw the lines for eight district councils. Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Sonia Hernandez, former Anaheim prosecutor's sister, it's Morden Adrian Hernandez. Morden was one who was shot and killed by Anaheim's A.P. on March 6, 2012. Morden was the fourth victim of this year, killed by A.P. out of Bay. I come here with respect for my community, calling out A.P.'s on their tragic excessive officer involvement that has taken place here in Anaheim. My brother did not deserve to die in Bay. I wanted to bring to your attention something that was rather disturbing about my brother's incident. I've said it before, since thirteen people here, I'll repeat again. Two video recordings, I believe, was captured, captured my brother's incident on March 6. So I followed through, waited patiently for videos to come out. Thirdly, barring that, Green Party calls to disband and disarm Anaheim PD. The current department is a danger to public safety of Anaheim residents and to surrounding Orange County communities. They are an armed force which acts without oversight or accountability to Anaheim's residents who they're pledged to protect and serve.
That's right.
Fourth, we strongly support calls on U.S. Department of Justice to launch a full investigation of Anaheim Police Department for all civil rights violations. The Orange County Green Party urges all Anaheim residents to take a strong interest in their community and work to resolve all differences using grassroots organizing and nonviolence. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor of the City Council members. My name is Martin Lopez, and I am a Anaheim resident for seven years, but I have actually worked in Anaheim for twenty-two years. So I really do know this city very well. And I'm here tonight to speak on district elections. And while it seems to appear, or appears like you guys are now considering the issue of district elections, like putting this on the, on the agenda, let's not forget, and I want to remind you, that there's a lawsuit pending. So I'm here tonight to urge you to make a few points. And one of my main points is to urge you to settle the lawsuit before you move this item to put on the ballot. Let's not forget that this is a civil rights violation, and, and this is not a, a political item. So please, I urge you to settle the lawsuit as soon as possible, actually now. So the other point that I want to make is that the council needs to stop stalling. I mean, the, this, and, and bring, uh, stop bringing these alternatives. And let's bring a solution to this issue and sit down with the community. And I want to ask the city council now, I mean, have you guys actually had any discussions with the plaintiffs at all? The people that filed the lawsuit? I mean, let's not forget this, every, everything that is happening around district elections was brought up by a group of concerned citizens. And we, and have you guys talked to them? I mean, I don't, from what I know, you haven't even talked to them. You guys are bringing these items to the agenda. But you need to talk to them. This item, this issue needs to be settled in the courthouse, not in the polls. Number three, Anaheim needs at least eight council districts. I mean, Anaheim is a huge city, three hundred and fifty, oh, twelve to three hundred and fifty thousand residents. Six district councils will not be, is not enough. There will be too many residents for council members. You need to make districts that are reasonable and viable for residents to be able to talk to their, to be able to reach to their city council members, to be able to have big council communication with them. We want the choice, and this is not about race or a specific race, but this is we, as a Latino community, we want to be able to choose a candidate of our options. And lastly, we, I mean, given that the current city council has not addressed this issue before, and now that our lawsuit is pending and is being filed now, so we don't trust that you guys will make the best decision for this, for redistricting or establishing this. So we need, you guys need to sit down and negotiate, and, and with plaintiffs and with the community, and let us all draw the line for eight district councils. Thank you.
My name is Sonia Hernandez, former Anaheim Crusader's sister of Morden Adrian Hernandez. Morden was, was killed when he was shot, he was killed by Anaheim A.P.D. on March sixth, two thousand twelve. Morden was the fourth victim this year, killed by A.P.D. out of A.A. I've come here with respect for my community, calling out A.P.D. on their tragic excessive officer involvement that has taken place here in Anaheim. My brother did not deserve to die in vain. I wanted to bring to your attention something that was rather disturbing about my brother's incident. Um, I've said it before, um, since thirteen people here, I'll repeat it again. Two victims, I believe, was captured, captured my brother's incident on March sixth. So I, I followed through, waited patiently for videos to come up. None yet. Um, a couple days after Morden, my brother's shooting, they went to the state, the police confiscated the videos. And ironically, after a month attempting to, I wa- ironically, um, after Renal and Joel's shooting, my mom finally received a call from the DA, and they told my mom there was never a video surveillance taken. Now, this, I find it very weird, just for the fact that we all were following through, you know, the murder scene, all of a sudden, there's no more. So I want answers. I know I was had to wait patiently for them, but, you know, I, I really strongly do believe there was video surveillance that captured my brother's murder, and I want to see them. So all I ask is to please really take a good look at this officer involvement. I'm really sick and tired of being lied to. And I will continue to wait patiently, patiently for my brother's murder footage. Thank you.
Morgen.
Thank you, thank you, council members. My name is Paula Dixon. I'm an internal resident of Anaheim for nine years. Since two thousand three, I'm a history of a citizen of the city of Anaheim. I've had experiences of like questioning Anaheim Police Department. The A.P.D. is committed to protecting certain communities. On many occasions, I've attempted to file police reports of crimes at my police service community against me and my family, but I was turned away. The A.P.D. has not taken this seriously. One day in a lobby, I watched another female citizen complain of abuse at the Henson Park, and an officer came from behind a cracked glass window, walked through the lobby toward this woman, and escorted her into a room where they spoke privately out of earshot. Yet, when I complained about my domestic abuse issue, I was told and forced to provide personal details behind my, for everyone in the lobby to hear. My abuser threatened me, harassed me from city to city and state to state, sabotaged my computers and other electronic devices I realized to collect evidence of abuse from him and others. Water's been poured into my car's gas tank, and tins have been broken off of my DVD. They threatened no scissors in my, on the windshield. And when we realized I recognized him and stopped personally showing his presence, instead, he was the aide of others, and I photographed him. And subsequently, we had had their photos deleted from my digital camera, as my evidence has been destroyed and stolen. He and these other individuals have engaged in the A.P.D.'s terrorization, threatened, and intimidated me from reporting it. Yet, I continued attempting to report it to the A.P.D. in vain. Because of this constant harassment and the lack of action by the A.P.D., my abuser fears to be involved, which only escalates the abuses. I fear for my attic, and I have attempted to make a response to the A.P.D. many times. I don't feel I've been taken seriously, and I don't feel safe in the community. In April two thousand twelve, when I went to the A.P.D. to file police reports indicating that someone had been in my home and that photos were deleted from my digital camera, more evidence, um, from my abuser, I was pretty accused. The cadet I spoke to suggested that I accidentally deleted photos myself that the public, no ordinary individuals did at all, and that if they were deleting, it was no good deal, that I could always take some different pictures. He did not appreciate that those photos were evidence which could prove that crimes had been committed, including those who participated in them. He also suggested that I go to a computer expert who restores deleted photos, because it would be easy to have those photos restored. So I asked him where I could locate that expert and how much it costs, because those services are costly. All of my Anaheim many-time website inquiries regarding the A.P.D., um, as well as my A.P.D. police report cases, have all been closed immediately and never investigated, with the exception of a hit-and-run car accident. As a citizen like me, what do I have to do to feel that the A.P.D. is there serving and protecting everyone, including myself, and not merely picking and choosing those they favor? It's very difficult to make a case in three minutes, but at least I want to thank you for listening to my voice. And I'm hoping to get answers to address to someone else, because I want to take action to be proactive. It is not a desire in this town.
Mr. Smith, uh, if I start, City Mayor, your name, or, uh, that's... Morgen.
My name is Donna Osavito. And I just buried my son on Monday, Joel Osavito. He was killed July twenty-second by the Anaheim Police Department. Um, I'm not prepared right now. I actually just want to be there right now. Um, I'd like to start by, um, saying, the last time I spoke to the city council, I let you know that the day after my son was killed, officers from the gang unit went to my house to manually note who my children are, my other children, their names, their ages. Um, one of the names, Officer Killian, I, I ran into him at the memorial site for my son a few days ago. He, he let me know he was, uh, uh, disrespected. I got his name wrong, it's Officer Killian. So I, a day after my son was killed, people from the neighborhood came to me telling me their stories of being terrorized and intimidated by the gang enforcement unit and the killing crew. And they demanded that I do something about it. And there's so many people coming to me with their stories, and they, they need to have someone they can trust, because I don't even know who I can trust to say what's been told to me. I've been, I've heard people tell me that they've been told by the killing crew that they're next on their list. And that's really scary, and I don't know, I don't know who to go to to say that to. Um, then also, I used to, you know, read the newspaper and things, you know, well, it must be true, written in the newspaper, that the, those three, those three boys that shot at officers, what the newspaper failed to mention was, those, those officers used, um, a car that they encountered from another gang and went to that neighborhood trying to start something. And I hear about street terrorism from, from gang members, but what about the gang enforcement and their killing crew? What if something, what if someone just happened to be walking by, and they, they show, who would take the blame for that? And I'm just wondering how, how they allow those officers to go into neighborhoods and, and instigate acts of violence like that? And like I said, I'm not prepared, so, so that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
I'm a student of the local community, my name is Lysa Gomayes. Um, I was born and raised here in Anaheim, I'm twenty years old, and I have my entire childhood education here. Um, I went to Galvar Elementary for first year high, and graduated from that high school. I was raised in a neighborhood that I feel was deprived by the city of Anaheim, and one of the neighborhoods that was pretty comfortable with poverty and a lot of hardworking families that I can remember again in the weekend. I feel like we were deprived by the city of Anaheim, as well as many other neighborhoods that have been deprived in the city of Anaheim. I feel like, um, growing up, I lost a lot of friends due to gang violence, um, to, to pregnancy and drugs. And when I was sixteen, I made the decision that I would be, uh, would I be first in my family to graduate from college? And if there was a college here, I would be attending it. Um, so, uh, one thing again, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, um, is that, um, there's been a lot of narratives here that haven't been represented. And I, I believe that it was in our hands that we could be able to make more changes if you only opened the doors for us. Because, um, if, for example, if I wanted to let the council, I would have to be having like an income of over a hundred thousands of dollars, which I don't have. And if I wanted to create a significant change in my communities and the neighborhoods that I was brought up in, that a lot of words would be stuck in me. Um, so in that case, um, I really, I really enforce that. I even consider this also a petulant, because having a district elections will really endorse to so many communities that have been shut down by the city of Anaheim and the head of the line. So please stop stalling and take action. Thank you.
Mayor Katie.
Hi, my name is Tricia Smith. Um, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to thank the community for coming out here. Um, I don't really have a lot to say. You've seen a lot of us come up here, where the grieving families are the ones who have been killed. You know, everybody's got an opinion, everybody, you know, it's either positive or negative. And we concentrate only on one thing, and what hasn't really been an issue is the grieving families. You know, um, I've been going through the streets for three years. And I think it's time that we have a day of healing. Just one day of nonviolence, non-putting this person down or that person down. Just having one community, anybody who wants to come, date, get together, get to know each other, you know, one another, have some food, just talk. Because there has been so much grief, there's been so much anger. But we need to really just have one day of love, that's all we need. One day of love. And I'm asking the council and the community, that we all get together and make this work, just for one day. Just one day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Anna Creepel, and I'm here for the revolution and the people of the community of Juanita Street. We're tired of the police abuse, we're tired of the-
Get a little closer. There you go.
We're tired of the police, we're tired of the abuse that they are doing. We're tired of everybody brushing everything under this rug and not doing nothing about it. We need to gather as a community, and we need to have the council come into the communities, not the police, the council, and speak to the people, and ask and see all the abuse that they have seen. I myself was there twice when the police committed crimes. They committed them, and we're tired of it. And as a community, that's why we're all here. We're tired of it, and we want something done, okay? And yes, we do need to gather together and be as one as a community, and not be fighting with each other, and having different regular things. Maybe if we all came together, then it wouldn't happen that way. But it does need to be investigated, and that's why I'm here, okay? And, um, to make people afraid, they want to pay people off, and it's not going to happen no more. Because it didn't only happen here, it's happened in San Antonio. It needs to be investigated all over Orange County. Thank you.